I'd like to call to order the September fifteenth, 2020 Brooklyn City Board of Education regular meeting. Mrs. A., can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Oper.
Here.
Mr. Slattery.
Here.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Here. Can we all stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we'll send it to Dr. Caleres for superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mrs. Barcheck, Board of Education. Like to first thank everybody, parents, families, staff members, for a very unorthodox but very successful start of the school year. So, we started the week of August thirty-first with individual small group orientation activities where parents, students came in for one-on-one small group to pick up their device and kind of get orientated to the school year. I think I've mentioned before, one of the difficulties of doing this to start the year as opposed to what happened in the spring is our staff didn't know the kids. And so, our teaching staff, principals, other staff members did a wonderful job welcoming students and families and orientating them, getting them ready for remote learning. Remote learning started Tuesday, September eighth, had some minor technical issues, which I think was to be expected in terms of students having the right link to the right classroom. But overall, last week and these past two days have been very successful. Students have been attending. As a reminder, what's different between the spring and now is that students are following a schedule just like they would be here. They have a first, second, third, fourth period, and so on and so forth. Looks a little bit different at our younger grade levels because of some daycare issues, but ultimately, teachers are taping themselves and pushing out lessons, and it's been a very productive start of the year. Very encouraged with the health data in Cogga County, knock on wood, of course. And so, based on that information that we've had, a good four weeks in our orange level in the county, and the positivity rates have been less than five percent. Announced on Monday that we're going to be returning on September twenty-eighth to our hybrid schedule. And for a reminder for our families out there, hybrid schedule is Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, eight to one fifteen, and we'll start dismissing at one fifteen in different phases. Wednesdays, all students are at home in remote learning. They'll still have lessons and work to do on those Wednesdays, but that's kind of a mid-part in the week where our teachers will be able to connect with our remote students because we still have students in our district that have selected the remote learning option only. So, for those students who have selected that option, you don't need to do anything. You're going to hear from your principal, you're going to continue on that schedule, you're committed to that remote until the first semester. Sometime in November, we will send out a second survey to families, seeing who would like to commit for second semester remote. So, I see the remote option being available for families all year. Another announcement I made, in terms of our athletics and activities, we can return to practices on Monday, September twenty-first. I think I had discussions with everybody. One of my big concerns with waiting until the twenty-eighth was that students were going to be out almost three weeks, wouldn't have a chance to re-acclimate to that physical conditioning, and then they're going to jump right into contests with other schools. So, next week will be return to practices after school, of course, because we have scheduled, we have school during the day, but we'll be able to re-acclimate during that week, and then contests will follow the following weekend. You know, this has been a very difficult decision for everybody, and I think I've said to the board many times over the last couple of months, it's going to be difficult to return to normal until we try to return to normal. And so, I'm cautiously optimistic with the hybrid schedule, but I think part of what we have to remember is that these masks are working. There's a safety piece, security piece with having these masks on. So, I would ask parents, over the next couple of weeks, reinforce that habit, those procedures with your kids, because we want this to work. We want to stay open, and that's going to really depend on the health situation of the district. You know, if we have a couple cases or an outbreak in a classroom or a wing, we're going to be forced to go back into the remote learning, and that's okay. We're used to doing that, but I want to try to stay open as long as we can in terms of working with that physical distancing, the hand sanitizer. So, our staff, Mrs. Neal, her team has been working diligently with equipping classrooms, hand sanitizer stations. We're going to try to reinforce those procedures with students, but it's a partnership. I do also want to mention, if for any reason in the county, if the county should go to a purple level, that last level, we would go to remote pretty quickly. So, I would ask parents, another message to our families, have those contingency plans in terms of daycare ready to go. I know last spring, we had that happen to many, many families, but keep in mind, we may ebb and flow back from hybrid to remote, and just be mindful, if we ever do go into that purple county-level coding, we will go into remote as a school district.
Doctor.
Yeah, please, yeah, absolutely.
And if we happen to do that.
Yes.
It's going to be for several weeks at least.
It will be for, yeah. What I think has worked for us as a district is that we've tried to do this in four- to five-week increments, and I think that's the right thing to do for our family planning. With this hybrid schedule, starting the twenty-eighth, we're going to stay in that schedule until the end of October, assuming nothing.
Assuming we don't go into purple.
Assuming nothing health-related happens, but we're going to stay in that hybrid level for consistency. Mid-October, third week in October, we're going to give parents notification, are we going to stay in hybrid? Are we going to come back into traditional five-day learning? I think that's as far as we can go because I think the lessons that many school districts have learned throughout the beginning of this summer, August, September, is that data can change quickly for the worse, but also for the better. I mean, I remember sitting at a meeting with health officials beginning of August, and verbatim, it was, well, I don't anticipate us being out of red before Labor Day. Well, we were in oranges of county a couple of weeks before, and that's wonderful news, but those are some of the things we can't predict. So, I think if we maintain our four-to-five-week increment in decisions, I think that's the best thing for our families because I want to try and I want to get our kids back in front of us, but I also want to do that safely for our families, for our students, and for our staff members. Did that answer your question?
Yes, no, it did. Thank you. Just so they were prepared, that it's not going to be, you know, overnight.
Yeah. And again, this is a partnership, and we know that. And one of the things I would also say is that for parents, when kids are sick, and I've said this to staff members, too, don't come to school. Stay home, get well, because I think our masks will help with the flu and cold season, but we also want to say to our families, listen, keep them home, get them well. And because we have the remote learning option, sometimes our families send kids to school because they don't want to get behind. Well, we have the capability now that they can still do the work while they're at home, and that's our remote option. And that's a benefit for this. So, I think, again, it's a partnership. We want to make sure kids are safe, healthy, and we want to encourage that with, I encourage it with our staff members, want to encourage it with our families also. For our families, again, if I repeat myself, I apologize, for our families that have selected remote learning, you don't need to do nothing, and now you'll continue doing that through the end of the first semester, and we'll, again, send another survey out in November. And then last, just a shout-out and thank you to our classified staff, our certified staff, our administrative team for the work that they've done. Board of Education, for your support in getting the year started, in starting remote, and even in the decision to come back. But also thank you to our families and our students. You've been absolutely amazing during this time, and I think that just shows the power of our community, the power of our families, the power of our students. I know they're excited to get back. We're excited to have them back, and can't wait for the twenty-eighth. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Caleres. Now, onto the treasurer's report. Mrs. A.
Yes, I have a few things. The week of the twenty-first, which is next week already, I have a company coming out called Asset Control Solutions. They're going to do a whole inventory of the building, just to kind of clean it up, make sure everything's in order, and they follow the guidelines for the audit of our state for the capital assets. So, we're just going to have everything looked at, a once-over to get that cleaned up. I met with a couple student activity advisors, and I'm going to meet with them later on in the week. Hopefully, my plan is to get, you know, one at the end of the year, one approval for the student activities. Right now, we're still going to be intermittent just because with everything going on, and we don't even know what fundraisers may or may not happen. So, I do have a student activity for approval later on, but hopefully by next year, we could get it all in one spook. And then, what else do I have here? Finance committee, meeting on the twenty-third at eight fifteen in the morning here at Brooklyn. So, that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Barcheck, if I might, I left one item out that I thought, that I think's very important for you here. The Ohio Department of Health also has required school districts to publicly report any confirmed student or staff cases of COVID. So, two points with that. On our website is a, we call it a COVID-19 dashboard. You can go take a look at it. It'll stay up there all time. We will update it weekly, but it's very transparent. We want to be transparent with the community and be open and honest. It will report number of confirmed cases, past and present, so families understand what's going on. Also, if we ever get into a situation where we do have a confirmed case, either one of our students or one of our staff members, we're required by law to send that notice to families, and we will do that. What I want to say is, it'll be very ambiguous in terms of, we'll follow the guidelines of the law and report the information. We obviously have to protect the health and privacy information of students and staff. If your student has been impacted by this, so let's say, so I was the positive case, and Mr. Oper here was in my class, and he was next to me, we would contact Jim's parents to let them know personally what that means. So, if you see the letter and you don't hear anything, that means your child has not been impacted. Our school nurse, Mrs. Manley, who works for the Board of Health, will make those personal phone calls to close contacts if it happens to come that way. But I just want, I thought that was important information, I wanted to add to that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Ted, a real quick question, if you don't mind, Bonnie. Is the new rule now ten days versus fourteen days for self-quarantining?
It is, so, and on a confirmed case, it's ten days from the confirmed case. If it's a positive, if you don't have symptoms, but it's a positive contact, it's fourteen days. So, and I'll double-check that with Mrs. Manley, Mr. Singer, but I believe it's ten days from the confirmed case, and then fourteen days if it's a close contact.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, onto board committee reports and board comments. We're going to start today off with Mr. Oper.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a short Caleres report. Here's some highlights from last week's presentation of programming. After having a low during the eighteen-nineteen school year, enrollment is up twelve percent from that point. As of September first, Brooklyn had sixty-five juniors at applications, which was forty-four percent, which is, and I'm point of pride, it's the best percentage among the districts. There's almost thirty-one-hundred students enrolled in satellite programming. The adult cash balance is down from last year, but that is because of the lack of enrichment classes that weren't held during the pandemic during the spring. Adult career registration has held steady, and some of the adult classes that were halted in the spring will be resuming in the fall before the fall adult classes start at that point. The opening of the school went off with very minimal problems, kind of like what we had here with some connectivity issues that were resolved. The students have been asked to come dressed for class so as to minimize use of the locker rooms, and that came off pretty much without a hitch. To your point, I'd like to applaud the staff and administration and everyone for starting the school year on a good foot. And received an email from Mrs. A. with our financials during the week, and we haven't had that much detail for a long time, and I'm grateful for that. Some of the templates look a little oddly familiar, and I suppose there's a reason for that, but you were carrying mic all those years is what it was, but.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oper. Now, onto Mr. Rick Singer.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Just two things on my agenda here. Getting to know the teachers that are teaching your children. I would take this opportunity while we're in remote learning to take advantage of the online instruction that your children are getting from the various teaching staff that allows you to communicate again with your child's teacher if you have any questions about the course instruction. And then, following up with that, to make sure that your student has the ability to comprehend what was taught during that lesson plan. If not, ask them to revisit that lesson plan that's been recorded. And if there are any further questions, to contact the teacher and ask for, you know, perhaps, you know, revisiting the lesson plans so the student understands, speaking from experience. Once we do go back to class, I ask the parents, please take the time to meet with your student's teacher. Identify, strengthen the deficiencies that your student might have. You know, with remote instruction, you know, Dr. Ted made a point, the teachers don't know the students, the students don't really know the teachers that well. So, this also goes hand-in-hand with the parents, getting to know the teaching staff, especially those who are impacting your child's instruction and education. Bottom line, be involved. Please keep your students focused on the school instruction, and please minimize any distractions that they might have at home. What they noticed with my daughter, too, was we put her in a room where the distractions are at minimum. Things like, you know, going to the bathroom are okay, but, you know, trying to get something from the fridge during instruction and are getting a text message from a friend or something like that, that, you know, we have to minimize those distractions. I would encourage all parents, grandparents that live with the students, please get a flu shot this year. It's strongly recommended. We're not sure what the influenza season's going to look like, but what we don't want to do is pass on any kind of influenza flu on top of what we're seeing with COVID to your students or the staff. Please avoid, please avoid missing their instruction because for us, unless we have the school nurse to let us know, we don't know if the kids are sick from the flu, especially when we go back to in-class instruction, or if there's a possible COVID instruction. So, to avoid that, strongly encourage people to get, go to the doctor, go to the drugstore, and get a flu shot. And a report.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Now, onto Mr. Rob Slattery.
Thank you. There is a rec board meeting. I got a, it was contacted by the city. We have it for the twenty-first, so I'll have a report on the twenty-third from that at our next meeting. We had a facilities meeting last week talking about the Hurricane Alley project. I believe the bids are due Thursday?
I believe so, yes.
This Thursday, so then we'll have the opening of those, and that's going to come in front of the board. I think there's something on the agenda tonight. Domestic violence, I have not heard back yet, so I'll send an email out. One, with the construction of the, with the start of the practice field, removing the dirt, I know that with the way the football schedule, if we continue with playing all the games, we have more home games than we normally did. Obviously, with that, I mean, that parking lot's going to be.
We're going to have to coordinate what that looks like. It's a great point, yeah. We'll have to coordinate what that looks like. I haven't seen the football schedule or soccer schedule lately. I know Mr. Verba had moved games from, you know, kind of our three-week lull to after our return. So, I'll look at that schedule, but I can't imagine us beginning before the middle of October, but I will coordinate with Rodwell on that one from GPD.
And I got a couple people asking about the attendance at the games.
Yes.
Are we going to open it up to the general public to some level?
No, we're going to.
It's going to stay as.
We're going to continue following, yeah, we're going to continue following. I think that's the safest and the smartest thing to do right now.
I just didn't know what to tell. I just wanted to know.
I think the state's at fifteen percent capacity. I think right now, we're in a good point. I'll talk with Mr. Verba and find out what that looks like from a home football stand, how many fans we could actually hold. But from the two home games that I observed, looks like it's going pretty well. I think, you know, game one, you know, we learned some things and made some adjustments around the fencing, which I think were appropriate. You know, we have those traditionalists who like to stand around the fence, but, and that's okay. Mr. Verba said, okay, we'll do it every other chain link, and he appropriately marked it off. So, I think as we go through the season, we'll learn, get a little bit better. I'll find out what that percent capacity is in terms of a number, but with our football players, with our cheerleaders and our band, we're probably pretty close if everybody uses a ticket.
Okay, and then, the live streaming was brought up. How close, I mean?
We're not close.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not close. We don't, right now, we don't have Wi-Fi capability out there. I'll follow up again with Jim, but my last conversation with him is that we don't have that capability as of yet, but again, he was out last week, so I'll find out from him for sure.
And then, the last thing I have is, it was an article either yesterday or today, I think it was last night, that Governor Dewine signed that bill granting immunity to schools.
That is a true statement, yes.
Very good.
Yeah, should be.
That's, yeah, that's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slattery. Now, onto Mr. Rocky Neal.
Thank you, Madam President. Other than welcome back, and what capacity you are here, welcome back. We'll get back to normals one day soon in the near future. The only other thing that I have to say is, I will make the announcement, I don't know if I should make this announcement, but I will, but I am running for State Board of Education, District Eleven, which is Brooklyn's district and surrounding districts, Cogga County, part of Lake, part of Lake County as well, too. So, November third, so I just want to make everybody aware of that. So, if you want to get rid of me, you got to vote for me. All right?
That was the third?
You can vote twice, try to vote twice, and I'm being sarcastic. So, I just want to let everybody know that, all right?
And that's into my report.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. My report will be very brief tonight. I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said. I want to welcome everyone back and thank all of our staff and everyone who's worked so hard to get us to where we're at. Thank you for everything you guys have done, and I look forward to things going back to normal even more so in October, and hope everyone stays healthy. And if anyone would like to speak with me, I can always be reached at two-one-six, four-zero-six, four-three-zero-four. Now, onto the reading of tonight's agenda and approval of minutes, and tonight's reader is Mr. Jim Oper.
Resolve the minutes of the August twenty-six, 2020 Board of Education meeting be adopted, and all action taken by the Board of Education at said meeting is hereby reaffirmed and approved.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Questions, comments? Mrs. A., can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the financial statements of receipts and expenditures for the month of August 2020, including all purchase orders paid and all then-and-now statements for the month of August as submitted.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A., will you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Do I just read the, does it just proceed all through the last one?
Yeah, just, absolutely.
Yeah, just the superintendent recommends the first reading for the following policies and bylaws. Want to read them all?
That's a, yeah, okay, thank you.
Number fifteen-twenty, deployment of administrators. Twenty-two-seventy, religion in the curriculum. Thirty-two-twenty-three, standard-based school counselor evaluation. Fifty-two-hundred attendance. Fifty-four-sixty-point-oh-two, students at risk of not qualifying for a high school diploma. Fifty-six-ten, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. Fifty-six-eleven, due process rights. Sixty-one-oh-seven, authorization to accept and distribute electronic records and to use electronic signatures. Eighty-eight-hundred, religious patriotic ceremonies and observances.
We don't need a motion for that, or do we?
No.
Okay.
Read the procedure. Okay. Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached service addendum for Connect to provide EMIS processing services for the term of the 2020-2021 school year, concluding June thirtieth, 2021.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mrs. Barcheck, just real quick explanation. So, typically, previous to this year, we were contracting our EMIS services through ESC of Northeast Ohio. This employee was, is transitioning to a new position, so we decided to contract with Connect for this school year. It's a shared service agreement with another school district out in Lorain County. It's the same approximate cost that we were paying last year, so it's going to be no change in our general fund dollars. I think going forward, I think it's going to be obviously a one-year commitment with this. We need to get through this year, and I'll probably have conversations with the board in terms of some reorganization and trying to bring that, those services back in-house a little bit. So, but this will get us through this year, and it's approximately two and a half days a week.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. A., can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
So moved.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Slattery.
He's got to be special, yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
I'm sorry.
Resolve that Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the granting of a limited contract to Zachary Vondaro, Title I Tutor, point-five FTE, Step Two, effective September fourteenth, 2020, to be paid from the annual federal Title I funds received by the school district.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Questions, comments?
If you remember, Zachariah came on board with us back in the summer for halftime intervention specialist. We had a vacating of a title position to take over for a staff member at a long-term subposition, so Zachariah actually is going to take on a halftime title role. No general fund impacts. We'll be paying for this through our grant funds, and really typically what we're doing is we're using Zachariah here to help support our K-one-two remote students. So, he's going to be an extra body helping Mrs. Kaneski in terms of supporting our little ones in remote learning.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. A., can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
The amended certificate and then the below-one permanent appropriations following tonight's approval hopefully will be sent to the county, and then after that, the county will give me their okay, and they could be amended anytime during FY21. And if amendments are needed, I'll come back to the board.
Okay.
So, we're looking at a total of twenty-nine million, eighty-three thousand, four nineteen dollars, is that correct?
Of estimated revenue, correct.
Okay.
Including the unencumbered balance from before.
Right.
Yes.
Did it give you any kind of indication, county, any communication as far as collections for property taxes?
Not yet. I'm still going off the one that we've had in the past. About ninety-seven percent have been collected, but I haven't received anything new.
Nothing updated.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. A., can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2021.
Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have questions, comments?
Second.
I mean, sorry, second. Usually, one of you says second before I can get a chance to say it. Second?
I'm trying to let other people have a chance.
Oh, second, mm-hmm. Okay, and questions, comments now? No one? Okay. Mrs. A., can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Oper.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yeah.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the application for the following student activity on final of the treasurer's office, Prom Senior Class Activity Fund fiscal year 2021.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? I have a question. What happens if, for some reason, they don't have a prom? Does anyone, like, the money just reverts back to? Does anyone, like, the money just reverts back to?
So I will verify with them, but at least with Windows on a River, they gave us our refund back. So that's, I will definitely verify, but we're not going to lose the money, as per my understanding.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else?
But we're going to have a prom. We hope.
Fingers crossed.
Right.
Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Oper?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolvent the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3313.26 gratefully accepts the generous anonymous, yeah, anonymous donation of $1,000 to the Brooklyn School Principals account for the benefit of the students.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Oper?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes. Is there any other correspondence related to action information? Any other business?
I do, I do have a question here. And I forgot to ask, I apologize, I asked, forgot to ask, Colleen. You met, you met with Rick Maniloff today?
Yes, not today, but I did. I met with him on Friday.
Okay.
Or Monday. I don't know what even today is, but yes, I did meet with him.
Did he suggest any, any options to be taken for, for debt service?
For debt service? I have asked him a couple of questions. I said the refunding. I believe there was a question if you could refund a refunding. And yes, you can on the taxable portion. The other one is not callable till, I believe, 2027.
Okay.
So he, I don't, I don't want to say he recommended yes or no, but there is an option if we want to talk about that during the finance committee. I could definitely get more information about that.
All right. Talking about on the 23rd?
Yes, but, but there's a portion that's not callable, so we have to do it a different route, but it can be done.
But it's callable in, in 2027?
Correct, yes.
Dr. Ted, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
In part of this, you said that there, there was some training for the administration as far as investigations for harassment, things like that?
Correct.
Is that open for the board? Any member, if they're able to?
That's going to be, it's going to be administrative, administrators-
Okay.
At that time.
Okay.
And that's being done by Mr. Marklin?
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Ms. Barcheck, I just want to mention, I think you and I spoke about this earlier this week. We, we do have one scheduled board meeting for November, and only one scheduled meeting for December. So if the board wants to add another meeting in either of those months, I, you know, we probably want to talk about it at some point, but I just wanted to bring-
What were the dates that we thought of for those two meetings? Because there was actual dates that you and I spoke about for those meetings.
So we have board meetings-
So November is the 17th, so-
The 28th is our, is our, our last meeting in October, and then November, November 17th.
Yes.
For some reason, I got two marked down here, 17th and 30th.
Um, let's see. I don't have that right now, but that, you might be right. I didn't see that on the list.
Okay.
But right now, I mean, if you wanted to do, go after, if we wanted to go after, because our next meeting then for Dec, our, our final meeting in December is the 15th.
So, yeah, we have to do one for the December and one for November. So do we want to do the 30th, or do we want to go the week before the 17th? Or do you want to do-
That's the board's pleasure, I mean-
So did, what day was it then?
I think we talked, I think we talked about if we wanted two meetings in November, we would have done a back-to-back like the, um-
The 17th is-
The 17th would be that Tuesday, so the week before, maybe the 11th?
Yes, the 11th. So is the 11th or the 10th? The Tuesday or the Wednesday, the 10th or the 11th?
10th would work better for me.
Okay. 10th, okay with everybody?
Probably not, because I think since we won't probably, on to Columbus, we'll probably have a Polaris meeting, because usually we meet down there.
Okay.
But I probably, I, I have to confirm that, but I'm, have to see if we have a Polaris meeting on the 10th.
On the 10th, so the 11th doesn't work for you?
Can I, can I suggest something as well? Jim kind of prompted it. I know we, we talked about maybe having a retreat, a board retreat, since we're not going, I don't think we're going to Columbus at all.
Yes, we, we're going to be setting that up. We had that, we're going to set that up with Mr. Marklin for a Saturday meeting.
Okay.
Of the board retreat.
So we're going to do something like that during that week?
We're going to do something probably before that, we're going to try to, maybe in October, a Saturday in October.
Did we talk about that, or was that in a, did you-
Those were the hurricane-
Those were my updates, those were my updates to the board, yes.
Yeah, and the hurricane watch? But so if we do that maybe in October, we have to look at the Saturday, what Saturdays are available for everybody in October.
Mr. Singer, I think OSBA Capitol Conference, I think they've already announced it's virtual. So I think, I think they have, I'm, I'm almost positive.
So they're going to have a program?
I believe they're going to have a program, but I believe it's going to be all virtual. I, I haven't seen details yet. I'll, I'll take, I'll take a look and see if I can find out any information.
So the 11th doesn't work for you, or is it?
I, you know what, I can make it work.
Okay, so is the 11th works for everybody then?
Is it the 11th?
Yes, November 11th, Wednesday, the November 11th.
6:00 PM, correct?
6:00 PM.
Okay.
And then for December, you were thinking the first week in December?
I would think that would be great, because then our last meeting in November is the 18th. That's a week between, so.
So, yeah, the 15th then, so then, so you want to do the, the 2nd, December 2nd? Is that fine? December 2nd? Okay, and then our regular meeting is the 15th?
Also 6:00, 6:00 PM, Ms. Barcheck?
Yes, 6:00 PM for both.
Great.
You know you're going to have to bring cake, right?
Yeah, whose birthday is it?
I will, I will be 60.
Whoa, yes.
So it's got to be a big cake.
Big cake.
Quite a milestone.
Yes, quite a milestone.
I'm catching up to Rick.
Yeah.
And Jim.
Everybody good with that?
I get those, I, we'll get those posted. Those, well, now, you know, we'll do the official notice of them, get them out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and announcement of the next regular meeting is Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020, in the Brooklyn School Media Center, located at the Board of Education Office, 9200 Bit Off Road, Brooklyn, Ohio, 6:00 PM. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Oper?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.